Oh, we're on? Oh, sorry. Okay. Good evening, Hatfield. Welcome to the March 19th, 2024 meeting of the Hatfield Select Board. I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. And Ed, can I have the public participation? Oh, sorry. We were, it's okay. As usual, I'll open the meeting by reading our public participation policy. The Hatfield Select Board welcomes everyone to its meetings and all other public meetings of the town of Hatfield. All regular and special meetings of the boards and committees of the town of Hatfield shall be open to the public and shall conform to the open meeting law. Executive sessions are closed to the public and will be held only as prescribed by the statutes of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It is important to recognize that the open meeting law affords the opportunity to listen to the proceedings, but not necessarily participate. During meetings of the select board, an attempt will be made to find balance between hearing from members of the community and conducting the required business of the Hatfield Select Board. Any announcements?
No.
No? I don't think I do either. I don't think I have any announcements. Is anyone here for public forum? No. So we'll move right along into our consent agenda, which is the approval of the minutes of the March 4th and March 12th meetings.
Make a motion that we approve the minute meetings, meeting minutes of March 4th and March 12th, 2024.
Well, I second that, but I want to make a change here. Under, under announcements, the YAG approval, I believe was 2,406. It stated on the minutes of being 3,406, so isn't...
Oh, 3 million.
Isn't, I mean, 3,400, yeah, 3,406,000, but I thought it was only 2,406,000.
It is 2 million. Yeah, that is a good catch, Ed. So would that change? Okay. So with that change, a motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So Mickey, I'm aware that you're wanting us to go out of order, which I'm willing to do if you think that this is going to be brief, just because we do have people here that... Yeah, that's fine. So if you, if you want to come up, we'll do that and we'll... I just want to be... I know. Okay, so joined again by our friends from the Historical Commission, Mickey Sanderson and Kathy Olson, to have a further discussion about the storage situation for all the artifacts. So the way that it was left, we were going to reach out to try to get that estimate, which I did. We did, I did talk to JD. JD sent an estimate.
We have an estimate.
And Marlene, if you want to...
Yeah, that estimate is $9,968. That is to level the floor and in that storage room area. And there'll be some framing over the existing flooring to create a level substructure. And yeah, that, this price includes materials and labor, 9,968.
Okay.
I just want to make sure we're on the same wavelength. I mean, last meeting, we were talking the balcony area, just the balcony area for the historical artifacts. If we do the balcony area, then we can move the artifacts into there. So I did go upstairs and I have looked at the balcony area a couple of times. I've conversed with Phil. I've talked to Marlene and talked to Kyle. I, I think we should get the balcony area done. And then there's a couple of other items that need to be done. There's two receptacles on the firewall that would need to be added up. There's a mini split that would need to go in. There's a ceiling section that has to be repaired. There's a small piece of trim that has to be fixed. There is a thing over the door that has to be fixed. These are all minor repairs. There's the four walls that need to be painted. One wall has some wallpaper on it. All these are minor things. So talking to Phil, we're figuring on the high side, 30 grand to get the balcony area leveled, mini split. The lighting seems adequate at this time. So if you level the floor, put on a mini split and do all the little patch ups that we need, because there's a ceiling section that needs to be either patched or fixed or sheet rocked. So if we stay on a high side of 30, 30 grand, just to be on the safe side. And if we were to use ARPA funding, we can get it done and it would pay back from the storage fees at Pechoric's within a year. So I'm suggesting to the board that we move ahead using ARPA funds, up to 30,000, and get these minor repairs and the things that I just mentioned completed. And if we did that, I believe we would still be, if we took, where's those facts? Okay, we took the ARPA funds, which are at...
305683.
30563, minus 30, we're at like 27563. So, I mean, we're still within range in case we needed a buffer and we do have to spend that money by the end of this year. I know we'll never have a problem spending all that money on different things that we need to, but my suggestion is we, we move ahead with 30 grand, get the floor done, and then we contact with Phil of the town contractors to come and do those minor things and get that completed so that the balcony area, we're just talking a balcony area for the Historical Commission to put their stuff in, just to also give them, if we move ahead and get it done, it may take, you know, a month or two with coordination of the different contractors, you never know, but that would be allowable to give Pechoric the three-month notice. And then we might need to also figure in at the end if there's any moving expenses. So that's my spiel on the balcony area and those are my suggestions.
Very well thought out. I would, I would just add that we should also probably include in the list of expenses, but I think we could probably include it for under the 30,000, those shelves that she mentioned, those movable shelves.
And the door would have to be rekeyed.
I was just going to say security. Right, that was going to be my next.
So I think first thing is, is get the balcony and then we can work on getting these other pieces done.
And the timeline, I wasn't quite clear on that.
Well, the timeline is from when we get the contractor, when he's available and when he can get his work done. So, I mean, right now it's April. I don't know if, if the contractor is available in a few weeks, but I think the balcony, and Phil, you can, you can check me if I'm correct here. I'd say the balcony shouldn't be more than two weeks. I mean, that the balcony should be for what they're proposing, two weeks. To paint it shouldn't be more than a few days, depending if they have to put one or two coats. There's one wall that needs to be primed and then painted. It was only sheet rocked and, and joint compound and wasn't ever primed or painted.
I'll follow up with the contractor tomorrow to see what his availability is.
We'd have to run by the just making...
Shouldn't be more than a couple of days, but how to get it all together, I think working with Phil, Phil has used our contractors in the past. So, I mean, even though all these are small, you know, a week here, a week here, it's all got to be scheduled with the contractors on their availability.
Right, I mean...
Only, you know, thinking the three-month notice to...
Right, well, and, and he had mentioned that in his remarks that we...
I think we should be able to meet that, to know that we, I mean, we're talking, if we, if the group, if our board agrees to what I propose and we can then notify the contractor, Phil can work with them, try to get them in. And if this is what, March, so you got April, May, June, July, August, September, we got six months, I'm sure. I, I think there should be no reason why we can't get the few things that I've mentioned completed within the six months.
Okay, great. And have it be conditioned space with the mini split. It's actually good timing because we're not going to run into oppressive heat in the next, you know, even four months. And so that, that could actually work out, I think, really well with JD.
But again, I'm just talking about the balcony area, nothing else, because we, we already had committed the TV studio up there in the conference center for the rest of it.
We do have a thought, though.
Which that can be discussed at a further time. If during the time you wanted to bring stuff out at certain times, we could discuss that afterwards. So I say, let's get the balcony fixed and get the other stuff.
Yep.
Get the artifacts moved over here, then we can have further discussions.
Okay, great. That was the, that was the secondary thing that we would like to just put out there to the board and to the public is that to have, numerous times we've mentioned, the opportunity to get actually these beautiful things out to the public to, it's their collection, have them see it. And I mentioned pop-up exhibits, whether that be the Sophia Smith collection of furniture and belongings that we just thankfully were, were donated or anything else. So I would hope that, that we could work together, the board selectmen and the commission, to come up with reasonable dates and times where any furnishings up there could kind of be moved back in a corner and we could actually have a nice little pop-up exhibit space based on, you know, historic timelines of Hatfield or, as I said, the things that have never been seen.
Trying to share that space with the TV studio and the conference center.
Yeah, we're not looking to take it over.
And maybe some wheel, wheel display cases somehow that can be wheeled out and wheeled back in. And I mean, I was thinking the other night or saying, well, just think if they wanted to display like certain artifacts and you weld them out and you have the TV studio could even go on TV and explain the artifacts. And it'll be, I think, having a TV up there is going to be great because then you can have your own little production on the artifacts and explain it to the town and, and the history of them.
It can be filmed, there's all sorts of opportunities.
I mean, you could even put stuff behind the meetings, well, on the walls would be lovely because it's pretty stark up there, but also, you know, certain, I'm not sure what you have in the collection, but maybe things could be placed so that there's different artifacts behind at different meetings. Right? And that has people seeing them.
Possibilities are...
There are possibilities and we found a solution.
Yeah, the other conversation is going to be building security and who cleans it if it's on an off weekend or something? Who's going to take care of cleaning the bathroom and all the other stuff? So that's, that's a conversation for later, but let's make sure we can bring the artifacts back here and do the balcony and then we can do both. We can do the TV studio, the conference center, and you have the balcony, and then we can share the space somehow, maybe.
Okay, great. Fabulous. Do you have anything else?
Sound like a plan?
This is great.
And everybody's happy for it.
Ed, thank you, yes.
Thanks, Ed, nice.
Thank you very much. And Mickey.
Well, we have to...
You to Phil back there, because...
Next step is if my colleagues are in alliance here, that we have to vote on the approval of...
I will make a motion, I will make a motion that we approve this estimate we have to do the work and that we authorize up to 30,000 of ARPA funds to be used as, as Ed outlined and adding those movable shelves and security to allow the Historical Commission use of the balcony storage space.
It would also, in conjunction with society.
In conjunction with the society.
All right.
So I made the motion.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion?
No.
Oh, geez. Did it, we did it.
Thanks.
All right. Nice, I know.
Okay. Collaboration is best.
I would make JD aware of that sort of, once we start the ball rolling, there'll be a time constraint because of the notice to, to Timmy. Yeah. Yeah. Thank you, thank you for being patient. Do you want to come on up for our next topic? We are joined by Michael Oll, the engineer for the Route 5 Water and Sewer, and Ryan Gielher, from Gielher Contractors, to talk about the, you should come up to the microphone, to talk about the schedule?
Yes.
Weather's holding out?
Weather's holding out, other than we do need a little less rain overall. To update you since the last May meeting, two weeks ago, the plan, contractor still plans on starting 1st of April. We did send out, as of the end of last week, a single-page abbreviated schedule to everybody that's within that project area, just giving them the big picture heads up as to what is going to be happening, when and where. And to avoid confusion that was happening last year, we're not going to be issuing updates unless something changes that warrants an update, so that what people see right now is what we're going to be going by. Don't know if, Ryan, if you have anything more specific to offer?
No, I mean, we went through the schedule and his bullets are, are good with what we're trying to achieve and get the final paving done. I think it's sometime in November.
Yeah, right before.
Right before.
So, other than weather-related delays, which you can't do anything about, you don't foresee?
No, I mean, the only struggle we had last year is, is, and it's every town, is traffic control. And it was like when the big E hit, we had the three weeks or whatever, that was, it was, it's not just you, it's, it's everywhere that we worked. It just, I forget what one of the police officers told me, they take hundreds of people a day and the sheriffs and whatever, which help you folks out, all run down there. I, I don't know why, but that was like, we had some days where we weren't able, they weren't able to fill it. So if we can't fill it, we can't work.
I'm, I'm going to ask the expert here. What's the qualifications for that? And could we try to get more people sort of in, on our...
Traffic control.
Rotation? Ed has time?
Yeah, because we did pass something with the chief a while back, if I recall, to allow people that had training in traffic control to be used as traffic control officers on the construction projects.
Right.
And which included, at that time, some firefighters and police officers.
Because Greg is, Greg, Greg does that.
They've been using firefighters and when they can.
And I, I will notify tomorrow of, like, sort of, I've talked back and forth in the past month or so, what, you know, what our plan was, but just...
I guess I'd be curious to maybe get some kind of information from Mike about what the requirements are, because maybe we could just put out, you know, a message to townspeople that there may be people who would do this.
That's an idea.
And sort of create a roster, if you will, of folks that maybe wouldn't be taken away from projects like them.
The last meeting, I followed up with the police chief and asked him if he could just sort of reach out to the people he has, you know, scheduled last year, just to give them heads up that construction will be starting.
Get more people, too. Yeah. So...
In the meantime, they could contact the chief, too.
Yeah.
And ask them.
Ask if you're interested in doing road, road details. Yeah.
But I'm, I'm hoping that we had that in the fall, so that was like the main time that we had those issues. So I'm hoping, you know, obviously moving forward, the big E is not till the fall, which...
So maybe you'd be...
We're, right, we're at the point, we're wrapped up, we're waiting to do, there's
Well, that would be really nice.
I wouldn't think this time of year it's going to be a problem doing traffic control out there at the beginning.
Yeah.
All right.
But other than that, I, you know, I, I don't foresee anything that, that's going to cause...
Well, I certainly hope that we will be respectful of those property owners out there, you know, their safe egress, you know, on their properties, their, the noise. I know that certain amount of it just has to happen, is going to be disruptive. They've been patient. I just want to make sure we mitigate the disruption to them and certainly any safety concerns are addressed out there with, I know there was visibility issues at times with all of that.
Two or three houses that were extremely close and with all the driveways, they're complex in the area that we're working, but at this point now, we're at the point where everything, it's kind of nice.
Yeah, you're more, the homes are more spread out, right?
Yeah, it stretches out. The driveways are 300 or 400 feet, you know, from each other and not three driveways and then 300.
I mean, the issues with the pump station has finally been resolved. The pump station's in, and I know you were doing some work this winter, trying to, I don't know if it was getting electrical hooked up or whatever you were doing with the pump station.
When does the fencing come down around the pump station?
There's, they're working on some electrical piece and with EverSource and we have to put a concrete pad, so it's going to get to the point here fairly quickly that that should be, I will double check, there is some fence that goes up, there's a guardrail.
It's just one section of guardrail around the rootier side. So once we... Or actually just bollards.
So once, yeah, once, once we, once we finish that aspect up, we'll be able to take that down. I mean, that was basically to, mainly to define, it was for safety in the beginning, but it's to define our work area, so there's no question.
Gotcha.
And you still have to go underneath the river, or how you're getting...
No, it's over.
Oh, okay, over.
The casing's over.
And geez, I had another question. That work right there on the pumping station, because that's off, it's actually off the road, do you, are you bound by the April 1st or could you get started on that sooner?
We've been plugging...
Yeah, I thought there'd been some activity there.
We've been doing some activity, electrician's been working, another gentleman in my office is handling it, so the little day-to-day details, I don't know exactly, but they've been working with the electrician and EverSource and, and we've got the casing on, he's waiting on some materials for the internal pipe that goes through that casing.
But you're not bound by the April 1st, not getting out on the way.
No, we've been there, November, December, January, yeah.
I drive by there.
Because we're not touch, physically touching the road or cutting the blacktop, so we're able to, we could take a lane when there was an inclement weather, but we just were off the, off the road.
Well, if we're communicating with residents, we're doing what we can to, you know, make it a little easier on them this year than it was the last couple of years, that would be great. And wrapping it up this year would be, has to happen. Yeah.
How were those notices delivered, by the way?
They were mailed directly from our office right to all those addresses, heard the assessor's information.
Do we have one of those notices on the website?
No, but if you send it to me, I will be glad to post it.
Yep.
That would be good.
Just like to say, while Mike's here, I'm working on a contract amendment for Mass Works for the additional money, so I'll be reaching out to you probably tomorrow for some information.
Okay, awesome.
Well, Mass Works told us they want to make us whole. I hope they keep their word, making us whole.
That'd be great. Stay tuned on that.
And just one last piece is, based on this schedule, we're still looking at, as of, say, September 1st, people could be getting their individual private contractors lined up that make their connections.
I, I spoke with somebody at Big Y, where I do much of my constituent work, and he said that he had reached out to somebody, but they, he felt like most contractors were going to want to wait and know for sure that it was before they gave estimates or anything like that. So again, just staying in touch with people, because we want to make sure that they can get the estimates, have the work done before, you know, winter comes again.
I mean, if you come up with an idea where you have a definite end date, then you can announce it, like, get their contractors, if you know for sure, because hopefully, you know, there's no more water issues.
Yeah.
It's hard to get contractors to, you know, so...
That's my thought was if you could line them up at least.
So right now it's too early, but pretty soon it could be too late. Right? So...
And we can, I don't have a problem coming back, let's say, monthly to just touch base, everything's on track, things are slipping or we're ahead, whatever the case may be.
That would be helpful. Think if we're, I, how about this? If we're on track, I think maybe just a, a little written update, we're on track, things are going well. If anything goes off track, it would be nice to have you come in. Why don't we do that?
That works.
Yeah. Okay. Excellent.
So once the pump station is activated, the residents can start hooking up as far as the sewer lines are...
Those are outside.
Or not.
What's installed and tested, in theory, yes, I could, we could give a station number, Phil, or a manhole, and say up to here, you know, so they're not trying to be on top of me if it's a section, because we're going to finish and then, you know, test if it's a couple of days or a week for testing to do that. But yeah, we can, those will be sooner than, because we talked about that with Kyle on the pump station. So that'll open up probably, what, a hand?
That first section, that.
Yeah. Six or, probably six or 10 houses.
The first cluster that was really dealing with all the construction over the past two seasons may be able to connect sooner.
I mean, you're going to be going higher as you keep moving.
Yep. Yep. Should be getting further out of the groundwater issues, that's the hope.
Hallelujah.
But we're still pretty deep. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Let's just hope for good weather.
Would the board like to take up, it's, it's under continued old business with, with Phil, the sewer connection fees, so the board has talked about...
I was going to ask about waive, so that would be just to officially waive that?
We did not locate an actual vote. I was certain the board had done that at a previous meeting.
I don't think we did. That's why I brought it up.
So that's why I put it on there.
We discussed it, but we never voted on it.
But since we were just talking about the sewer connections, I thought, well, if you'd like to shake that up.
I mean, I, I think that that's an appropriate action of the board, given, you know, sort of the duration and inconvenience of this project.
Last discussion, we wanted to have like a, an end date of, we were going to vote on waiving the $1,000 connection fee, but give them a timeline of how long they can do it. If they can't do it this year, then they, they still should have the opportunity next year, because they may not get a contractor this year. So whether we want to make an end date of 2020 something.
Phil, you had suggested what, two, two or three years?
That seems kind of long. I mean, wouldn't you just, wouldn't we say like maybe by the end of 2025? So that gives them, that gives them an entire extra year beyond this.
Yeah, he suggested a three-year period.
From completion date or?
From now.
From now.
From now, yeah.
Because you're going to go from one construction season, this, this space. By the time they're done, he's not going to do any final paving until November. So if people, by the time you test the line, I really don't think too many people are going to hook up this year.
And you think even beyond, like, all of next year, we should, we shouldn't say that they should be hooked up by the end of 2025? I mean, that gives...
I mean, that's why, I just put it in there saying that.
A little extra year beyond sort of, and then certainly, heaven forbid, there was another holdup, we could always extend it, right?
Once the line's tested and everything's done, a year from that date, so like, say, if they completed in November, from November of '24...
To November of '25.
So one year from the actual completion date of when everything's tested and everything?
Just to, just to help, like, the paving and the restoration and all those items, that's a couple of weeks worth of work that, you know, we finish the pipe, we do the testing, we have to wait a settlement period and then go in and do the paving. So there's a couple of weeks there, so just so you're, you know, someone contractor wants to come in, remember, not that they're cutting the road, but if they're in the area that we're trying to work, like, we grind out the road to pay, like, we can't have...
I see.
You know what I'm saying?
So you may have like blackout dates, basically of when...
So I want to, like, make sure that's not, doesn't go unrecognized, because when we come in to do that paving and do all that, we grind the road down, it's eight inches. I mean, we have to work with the residents to kind of get them out of the driveways to get them across, if you have it in the past.
So work, so, so if they're trying to hook up this year, that should be maybe those, their, their proposed installation date should be run by Phil so he can run it by...
Yeah, when we get closer to that, we can give Phil those dates just so that, because they would have to come to you to pull a permit, correct? So, so then at least he knows you're in that section, because what I don't want to see is the homeowner set up a contractor, he has three days to do the job and everything's hunky-dory, it rains, it moves, and then our, our schedule might move a little bit, we go in to pave.
Now they're in the way, I got it.
Contractor can't work and, you know, we're, we have to get that done, because we have that restraint of like Thanksgiving to get final paving and weather and everything against us.
Do you think then realistically, people are going to tie in next year?
I, I think you're going to, if it was, if you're asking, I think you might get 25%, 20% this year and the bulk of it next year, is what I, what I kind of think what would happen. Because, keep in mind, we're at house 30, 40 or 42.
Right.
I mean, there again, where we stretch out every day, we're about 300 feet, so we, as we chug along and move up the road, then we got to do the testing, you know, I can't have someone like, not that they're in the road, but they're going to be, especially in that first section, all those houses are like, are tight.
Right, so could people, so if you're, when you're down by the end of the project, could people be doing their hookups?
As long as we have it in and we have it tested, I have to look at, I forget where exactly in the schedule we had testing, if we had it all done, we might test some of We might test some of it as we move along, so it might free up, which I will look at that. It's just bringing the testing company out and the availability, we don't do that.
Okay, so this is kind of confusing, so I think we're going to need to communicate with the homeowners out there, so they sort of have an understanding of when they might be able to, when they might not be able to, what the ideal timing is. And I know it might be different almost for every house, right? Or for certain sections of homes?
At most, maybe in thirds.
Once we get the pump station online, we, you can give the town, these houses are, can go, and at that point, we're going to be further down the road and not, not near that. So if they want to do that, and then as we progress down and we get the pipe finished and it's tested, if it's September 1st, but then also give you, I don't want inconvenience anyone anymore than we have, but I just, the blackout dates for the paving and such, because I've, I've had that happen and stuff.
It's just going to require a lot of communication, that's all. So we need to, you guys need to communicate with each other about what the dates might be for particular sections, as Mike was saying, and then communicate that to homeowners. About how roughly, Phil, and I know probably every project is different, but how much is it to, like, basically run a connection? I mean, are we talking two grand, 10 grand?
I'll turn to Ryan.
Some of those houses are pretty close to the road.
It could be six to 10. I mean, it all depends with the plumbing, like, Gary's been on site. And the drawing shows a location, and we've talked with homeowners, and, you know, some of the water services locations were different than where they were. So, you know, we've had to move something. I think some people have septic, they might have to change their internal piping, so.
So, again, I guess thinking about the residents and, um, you know, that's expensive, right? That's really, so maybe, maybe people wouldn't be able to afford that even in next year, even if they're planning and saving and whatever for something like that. So maybe what we should do is give a timeline, um, but there should be some kind of, there should be a, we should allow for, if, if a particular homeowner says, "Look, I really want to tie in, but this is expensive. I'm going to need a couple of years before I can do it." I think we should have some flexibility there. So I want to give a timeline to incentivize.
What do we go, two years from the completion date?
Two years from the completion date, I guess. With the, but again, if there's a homeowner with a particular-
They can come and talk to us and we can-
They could come, maybe come and talk to Marlene. I don't think we need to make them come to a meeting to talk about it, but we could, we would, you know, entertain, um, specific requests if, if financially they need to wait beyond that.
After, beyond that.
Because then if you say, well, you wait to be on that, now you also have to pay for the hookup. It just keeps moving the goalposts for them, so.
That's appropriate.
I want to be sensitive to that.
So I'll make a motion that we approve the, uh, the waiver of the $1,000 fee, and they should be able to do it by, within two years from the completion date. And then after those two years, this pertains only to the 5 and 10 project. And after those two years, if there is still an issue, they can come to us and, and we can discuss it, whether they, we're going to waive it for them at that time.
Yeah, if there's special circumstances or something like that.
Does that sound like a happily decent motion? I don't know.
Yeah.
I think so. So that gives them all of '25 and all of '26 to do it, and then the availability to ask for some type of extension if, okay.
Motion made in second, any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good.
Obviously, we want to incentivize them to hook up as soon as possible. And I think most of them probably are planning on doing that. But, you know, it could be expensive for some of these, so. Okay, great, I don't, anything else?
No, good.
Okay, thank you.
Glad there's no more problems.
Thank you, thank you.
Go for it, get that job done.
I can't wait to sit in traffic on that road in the morning. That'll make me happy, actually.
You have the schedule, right?
Do I? I don't have a schedule. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So that's it for you, Phil?
Can I just ask a question in that motion? Did Ed say $2,000 hookup fee? Because it was a thousand, but I thought I heard him say two, okay. Wanted to make sure.
So the only thing I can mention, if you're going to send out a memo to these resident staffs, they have to still come in and make out an application. We'll waive the fee on the application.
Form's available on the website, right?
Right, but we still need that application.
Absolutely, yeah.
Residents have to put an application, exactly.
And that would be something easy to communicate to this group of people that we're communicating with regularly. Let's just send them an application and let them know they need to apply. Remind them that they need to fill it out, easy enough. Okay, all right, very good. So, Marlene, topic three, FY 2025 budget and proposed articles for annual town meeting discussion.
So, um, you, you did receive in your packet over the weekend a first draft of the articles, um, but there's been more work on that, um, since then. But I just want to, um, make you aware that we did receive a request, um, from the school. There will, will request, um, a notification, I should say. There is going to be a deficit in the vocational tuition and transportation FY '24 budget of $11,180. We're anticipating a, a deficit in snow and ice budget. We, that is unknown at this time. And articles that have been added to the warrant, um, three projects. Uh, one is the sewer asset management planning project, the stormwater asset management plan phase one, and drinking water asset management plan project. We were just made aware of those, um, a few weeks ago. So those have been added, and I'll be consulting with the treasurer on, on funding those.
Well, those, those three projects were added, but we, since they just came about, we haven't had anything for the residents to, to explain what those are. Maybe hopefully before town meeting, we can have a discussion on why are these three on the, on the town warrant, and what are they all about?
From what I understand, though, we're on the, the state revolving draft plan, Phil, correct me if I'm wrong, um, but they're supposed to be making a decision very soon. That's state revolving funds, right? So this would be in anticipation of a DEP grant. And the town's portion is relatively small for all three projects. But we, we are expecting to hear the award very soon.
So, I mean, I assume that would be put out to townspeople when we do all the information on all the articles?
Yes.
And we'll have more information by that point than we have tonight.
Yeah, those, those are considered, well, I, I consider them, I guess, capital articles. But we, the select board has yet to make decisions on the rest of the capital projects.
Right.
And, um, so that's just my update on the warrant article, uh, the, the annual town meeting warrant. Um, free cash was certified, um, $362,295 for the general fund, and enterprise water and sewer, uh, $405,563. And on the cable enterprise fund, $293,725. So both of those, that's retained earnings.
And those are delightful numbers.
So that is available, that's available for spending until June 30th of this year. So, um, just a reminder that, uh, any ballot questions need to be submitted to the town clerk no later than April 16th. So that would include any kind of override question.
Yeah, so we need to make sure that on our next, um, at our next meeting, we're having a discussion about if we're going to put forward articles on the fire department.
And I believe the select board and finance committee are meeting April 2nd.
Okay. We should, yeah, okay.
I anticipate April 23rd being the date that the select board will approve the warrant and sign it.
Okay, perfect.
And I did send out the latest budget this afternoon to the finance committee and the select board. Finance committee is meeting tomorrow evening. Though the treasurer will be, um, meeting with them, and they've asked me to be there as well.
Okay, great. Well, we did have a meeting with them last week, and actually got quite a lot of done, work done.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so I'm, I'm hoping that this budget season, while difficult in terms of the actual numbers, might be a little bit more streamlined than we've experienced over the last few years. Yeah, so, okay. That's a good update. Okay, so topic four, are you all set there?
I am all set, thank you.
Um, topic four is to appoint Scott, R. Scott Pomeroy, um, as Inspector of Animals. Now, this isn't done during our normal yearly appointments?
No, because this comes from the Department of Agriculture.
Make a motion to appoint, uh, Scott, R. Scott Pomeroy at, to the position of Inspector of Animals, per the new state requirements, which is attached in our handout.
Second.
Motion made in second, any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And again, a never-ending thank you to Scott for the work he does, because he does it very well, and, um, we appreciate him. And then we have another, um, appointment to the Recreation Commission, Sarah Berth. Yes, that committee desperately needs members.
Yeah, and it's coming up on, you know, rec season.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Sarah Berth to the Recreation Commission.
Second.
Motion made in second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you to Sarah. Okay, and then, um, Town Administrator. I received a recommendation from the interim treasurer collector, if the board would consider looking at an increase for the assistant treasurer collector. And, um, there is a letter in your packet from, from Mr. Clark, and also a letter from the assistant treasurer collector. You know, and, and she has been very valuable to that office, um, the last few months. You know, it was quite a transition with Ms. Cotton out, and then, um, even, even for a while, we didn't have anybody leading that office. She has stepped up and has taken on a considerable amount of responsibilities. And which, some of it would be the responsibilities of the assistant treasurer collector, because she hadn't had the prior training. But she has filled that void of the treasurer collector more often.
Yeah, we need to get that office on solid ground. So I think that, um, you know, making sure that we are retaining the employees that are there is really important at this point. Tammy does seem to be doing absolutely wonderful. This is in the, was this within the budget?
I, I believe it is. Um, I, I spoke to the interim treasurer collector. He said it's possible they may have to make a request to the finance committee.
But I would assume it would probably be pretty small, because this is almost, you know, we're pretty close to the end of the fiscal year anyway.
The increase would be an additional $2.21 an hour. He is asking that it be effective January 1st. So this would be retroactive. I think, yes, if it was, if it was in effect today, if the board voted, I don't think there would be too much of a problem, but because he's asking for it.
That's, I, I have no problem voting this, but I would like, um, to get information on if they think they're going to need a transfer or something from finance committee. I'd like to know that sooner rather than later. They should be able to project that.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so I'm, do we vote this, or do we just sign it?
You do normally vote this, you would in this case, yes.
Okay, so I'll take a motion.
The increase in. Okay, additional information.
I'll make a motion that we increase the pay rate.
As indicated.
As indicated here for the assistant treasurer collector.
Second.
Motion made in second, any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We appreciate Tammy, and we also appreciate, um, Mr. Clark recognizing Tammy's work and contribution. Okay, so next, we are going into executive session, correct, Marlene? We are, yes, we are. That was quick, that was quick.
I'll make a motion that we go into executive session. Master in law, chapter 38, section 21A, number two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel regarding treasurer collector position.
And we will not be coming back.
Should I read the second one?
Yeah, don't we, don't we have to read both motions?
Yes.
All together or we do separately?
Do we vote them separately?
No, you can still state the reasons for the two executive sessions, but yes, when we go, when the board goes, you'll have to vote to go out and go into executive session for the other one. But you can state the reasons why you are going into a second.
Okay, I'll continue. And the second executive session, Master in law, chapter 38, section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on bargaining or litigation position of the public body and the chair, so declares for the purpose of renewing the Department of Public Works Laborers Teamsters Union Agreement.
I'll second it, George, the aye, and we will not be coming back.
Yeah, we will.
And we will not be coming back.
I did have unanticipated new business.
Oh, go ahead, we didn't vote it yet.
Okay, I'm sorry. So thi- this is involving the Green Communities grant that we, um, we're a certified green community, and every year we have to file an annual report. And for the report that was submitted last year, we have to list all, any, you know, new vehicles and what our vehicle inventory is. The vehicle that, um, Phil acquired for the DPW director is, doesn't meet the requirements for, what is it? It's, um, not considered acceptable for, for the Green Communities grant. Phil provided a letter here explaining that there was a chip issue. The intent was to purchase a 2500 Silverado, and the dealership only had 175 orders in the queue, and he ended obtaining a 1500 Silverado. Is that correct, Phil?
Correct.
Yeah. So anyway, Green Communities would like an explanation why we purchased this vehicle that is not energy conservative.
Okay.
And, um, and how we will correct this. Well, he's already purchased the truck, but going forward, we, Phil does not anticipate a, a problem, but I guess it was the chip and due to COVID, there was a backlog of, of orders.
Yeah, I mean, there was 175 vehicles ordered and they received five, so.
So what do we have to do? Are you just letting us know about this?
Well, it doesn't meet the requirements from 18 gallons, because under when, when Chevy built the Silverados, it was-
I mean, I get that it doesn't meet it, but what do we need to do?
So, this letter, they asked for a letter from the town.
Do we have to sign it?
They want, they asked that the select board chair sign off on.
Okay, we don't need to vote or anything?
No, no. They just need to have that documented in their files.
Okay.
No, next time that a DPW vehicle should be an emergency vehicle. They're not classified as an emergency vehicle.
I'm sorry, I, yeah, I neglected to state that. It is considered an emergency vehicle, but not in, in their, um, require, as far as their requirements go, is not.
So now we'll backtrack to taking our vote on executive session.
Sorry, thank you.
Zinal, aye?
Yen, an aye.
George, aye.
Great, thank you. Thank you, John.